This is the Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It is Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. It is 1:03 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. In the boardroom is Vice Chair Ty Mensah, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards and County Manager Ramirez Chavez. And Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell.
Yeah, here you are. Off the screen.
Well, adjust the camera.
We also have some guests joining us, and I apologize, I cannot see you, but they are from Pac Mountain. And so today is our Pac Mountain Annual Briefing. So if...
Yeah, if I may, my inter- maybe...
We could do some introductions, yeah.
The Executive Director is here? Go ahead.
William Bosworth, I'm CEO of Pac Mountain. I replace Cheryl Fables. December 3rd, gosh, six months ago, seems like two years at this point. Excited to be here today.
And you have with you?
Arissa Deline, my executive assistant.
Oh, great, thank you. So really, go ahead.
Great, great. So I did throw a couple of points on the presentations you shared with you, just to kind of orient the conversation. So just a little bit of background for me, from my perspective. You know, I've been in the role for just over six months now. I do come up from an economic development background. So the last 15 to 16 years, I've been doing workforce and economic development in different parts of the country, and the last six years here in the state of Washington. I'm excited to be a part of this community. Graduating from Thurston's Leadership Group today was really exciting. It was a great experience to really dig in and get to know all of the assets of the community and the people that really make up the community. It's really a great community to be a part of, so. There will be some significant differences in the style and the way I view workforce development from how Cheryl viewed it. But much of the work that she did, the priority population focus, the diversity, equity, inclusion, much of that will carry forward. But what you'll see different from me is I do believe that the workforce system is a demand-driven system. So we really focus on the employer's needs and what the opportunities are in the region for people to find an occupation, have a successful career, and be financially self-sufficient. Cheryl operates from those perspectives as well, but I really lead from the perspective of what do employers have in terms of opportunity for us to engage in and really build the opportunity for our job seekers. That should also have a proportionate push into our local economy. So we should be able to get benefit from both sides of that perspective. And if you guys have any questions along the way, feel free to interrupt and ask them. But one of the things I want to talk about is funding. Over the past couple of years, we have had the opportunity to get more than our typical, what we call formula allotment. So the federal government, based on poverty statistics, unemployment rates, trends in particular sectors, determines how much money the state gets, and then that same model is then used to flow money to the individual counties. And in our workforce development region, there are five, and collectively, we manage that money essentially as one pot of money, but we do report out performance county by county because we're required with events. The past couple of years, because of the pandemic and things going on, we have had additional program dollars come in to the tune of $3 to $5 million across different types of target populations and specific needs that we have in our region, like responding to the opioid epidemic, as an example. Much of that money is, I would say, dried up. But what we will see in the next program years, there will be more funding that is available from a competitive perspective. So we will be able to go out and get more money as those opportunities come along. In terms of our formula funding, go ahead, sure.
You said that I could interrupt you, so I'm not going to depend on the chair. Normally, that's the format we use. You said money from opioid. Tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so typically with the way the federal money flows, it comes through three agencies. So the Department of Labor, Health and Human Services, and the Department of Education. And the WEOWA Act, which is really what frames the public workforce system. It really gives us our reporting structures, how the money is distributed, the policy rules around that. That's what we call the formula funding, or generically, we call it WEOWA funding. But our community colleges get money, our social agencies get money, and then through DOL, we get money at the workforce board level to use to do our, you know, typical work. That's also how we stand up the infrastructure of the system. From there, and increasingly, the Department of Labor especially is, instead of reallocating funding through those channels, it creates specific opportunities. So the opioid epidemic is a partnership between Health and Human Services and the Department of Labor to respond to the impacts broadly of the opioid epidemic in the country. So we have applied for, we're in our third year, we do have another round of funding. Because we have such a large impact across all five counties, we typically qualify for that funding. Those are often state-led, and they are in this case around the opioid fund. So we coordinate with Employment Security. The state does a single ask for all of the counties they want to support, and then the money's awarded out that way. Other competitive grants could be around a particular sector, a particular need, like upskilling people that have been impacted in manufacturing, as an example. People who have military backgrounds, veterans, or people returning to civilian work and things like that. So these grants are all, you know, they come out every quarter. There's a fresh round of these, and depending on how you would use that money programmatically, you could apply for that money and secure that money. And then we had the emergency response money, which was specifically to react to the pandemic, the impacts of it, and then to a second round to navigate the pandemic in terms of getting people employed.
Okay, thank you. I'll probably ask some more about that.
No, absolutely. So right now, what we're experiencing is the second year of cuts around the formula funding. So last year, we had about $500,000 less come into the region. This year was a bit more. We lost $722,000 of programming revenue. That's the funding that we use to provide services related to adults, dislocated worker, and youth programs. It also funds the system itself, so the one-stop centers you see, the workforce centers, and the program staff that supports our board and my team. So that's the funding that pulls together to do that. So that essentially brought us down about another 15% from what we had previously had, which was about 12%. So we've had nearly $1.5 million less money in the region in terms of providing the services through our formula funding. That essentially brings us down, our revenue for the year is going to be about $10 million. And that's the money that we'll use to stand up the system, build the infrastructure, and then provide services. Another point, that we are about $2.5 million less than last year or previous program year in terms of those competitive grants. We do have an application in around a reentry grant that will help us provide services to folks reentering the workforce from incarceration. And as others come along, we'll likely apply for them. So I think as the program year goes along, we'll see that grow more to like 12 to 13 million, which will still be a couple of million short of what we've had in previous years. So Thurston County-specific money, we've had a long partnership with the court system, providing... We call it the prep program. It's really preparing folks that are within 90 to 120 days that are in the chemical dependency program to help prepare their reentry into society. And what we're doing there is really focusing on their job readiness. It's been a very successful program. And then with the additional sales tax dollars that are coming in, the treatment sales tax dollars, we did recently get a second award to expand capacity to serve a broader array of folks. And we're also having a stronger connection to the workforce system at exit. So we have some additional resources from the state reentry council. It's a grant we got from Commerce to do some work around the same, with the same population. So we're blending that money together to really drive the outcomes or the success of folks reentering from Thurston County specifically. That equates to about $300,000 from the county, and then we are adding about $150,000 in services, another $100,000 for program support. And then that connects those participants directly to the WEOWA system, where they do qualify for additional investments to help them get back into employment. Through Thurston Strong Initiative, and to some degree, the ARPA funding, the county has $1.8 million in, and we're doing a, what we call the Job Champion Network. So we found and helped the local community-based organizations in partnership with the Community Foundation. We identified people to go to work for them and expand capacity as it relates to their impact by COVID, so that they could scale their services up and provide that for, or services for more people. And then the city, right now, it looks like the project's 100% funded through economic development dollars, but we did do it as an ARPA contract in case they need to backfill. We have a project where we're working with the three providers of unhoused services in the city, and we're working with them to introduce employment as a way to help them transition towards self-sufficiency. So the goal isn't that we expect that if we help them with, you know, some money and some work experience, they'll go to work and be self-sufficient. We're meeting them kind of where they are in their journey and helping them move along. So all of that programming is specific to Thurston County residents only, and to some degree, the city. But we also then blend it with those federal dollars that we have available.
It will, related to the ARPA funds. Have the sub-relationship agreement been finalized?
Yes, yeah, we have, the contract's been in place, gosh, I think about five months now. We, of course, had to go through procurement and solicit proposals for those employments. Most of those contracts with the providers have been executed. I think we have one or two in the second round. But we have, at least from a forecast perspective, distributed and allocated all of those funds out to the partners that will be using them to employ folks. And I think at this point, we've had up to three months billing against the actual employee salaries that they're employed. So it's going really, really well. It was a bit of a challenge, but we all worked together. Jenica did a great job really shepherding that process along, and her support has been fantastic. But that project, it is similar to a project we did around food security, where we brought resources to agencies during the pandemic to provide staff to help with the food needs of the community. That program was hugely successful. There's been a lot of eyes on it from all over the country at the federal level. And as we, because we were so involved with Thurston Strong, and they knew of this effort and actually helped design the effort, that's essentially what the ask of us was, is how could we do that for community-based organizations that, like employers, they have the same struggles, attracting talent, paying them good wages. It's worked out really, really well. And I think it's, for us, you know, it's a small project, but the impact it has had on our relationships with those community-based organizations has been phenomenal. And also understanding what resources are truly out there that we can leverage and combine together. So, yeah, we're excited about, we hope we get funded a second round. We would love to come to the table and talk about maybe doing things slightly different, different outcomes, all of that. But it's been a good project for us.
It will be great to come at some point and report, you know, what jobs we created under this.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have a photo to check out the Pac Mountain website, you could go to the procurement area. All of the awards are posted. And I think it is 100% on the website at this point. So you can see all of the agencies, but one of the things that we will do is report out the duration of employment, what their wage rates are, what the demographics of the people that were hired look like. And then as a part of the reporting back from the agencies that receive staff, we've asked for the narrative pieces about the experience that the clients are having. Because most people, you can respond to funding, but it's the stories and the experiences of the participants that I think resonate with people and understand the impacts of that, so.
It's wonderful. We'll want to include a lot of that in the federal report.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I'd fairly say there's some specific language on the reporting and the contract. And we'll definitely make sure that we give you all that kind of information that you need as well.
Sure, but that's, that's great.
Mr. Mensah?
Is it this Job Champion Network that's connected to ARPA?
Correct, yes, yes.
And then at the top, where it says County Courts Prep and TST, what is prep?
Prep is a pre-release employment preparation program, which is what the acronym stands for. But essentially, we have a full-time staff member that's supporting the folks in the chemical dependency program. And it is really a one-on-one, kind of an intense support mechanism, which includes, you know, following them out as they're released, making sure that their housing's secure, transportation. In the best situations, we're connecting them with employers for interviews. But the bigger message is that we want to connect them to, or navigate them, is the word we would use, navigate them to the community resources that are available to them. And with the hub, gosh, is it the reentry hub that starts?
Resource Hub.
Resource Hub, I'll get there.
I was going to ask you, there's a lot of coordination on that.
Yeah, so we're really excited because our contract manager that's been, had been with Pac Mountain for about four years is Jackie Bleska. She's overseeing that, the efforts, and that was an instantaneous partnership with us. She was very informative in helping us build our application for the TST funds. And the intent is that we will focus in Thurston County, our reentry services through the hub, right? Because largely, the work that we do with our funding, we do through contractors, because we're typically required to with federal dollars, so that's our model. But we have a heavy hand in designing the programs and the outcomes, and we play a lead role in building the relationships with partners, right? The hub, it makes that so easy, right? Because we, it's literally one-stop shopping for us. So now our goal is to get them immediately connected to the hub, and then we make sure the hub has the resources to do the work that we do, either directly through our contractors or through other providers.
William, I have a follow-up on that.
Sure.
And that is in regard to the prep. And you mentioned county courts. Is it district? Is it the treatment courts? Is it Superior Court, Family Juvenile Court? Is it all of them?
I believe it's contained to the treatment court because of the way TST funds work. And that was part of our challenge, was understanding what populations were appropriate to access using those funds. And I think that we, right now, working with, gosh, Shannon, is it Hanson? The program coordinator for the county, I apologize to get a call today. We're really trying to figure out what populations make sense for us to kind of expand the services into and build upon that. We did put in a federal grant for $1.5 billion based upon the prep model. And if we're successful there, we'll be able to double the staff that are providing direct services in the Thurston County facility. But more importantly, over time, the way you provide services in the facility, because of changes in technology and new threats that that kind of presents. One of the goals of that federal funding is to get back to the position where we can start doing in-facility GED completions, even training, those kinds of work. Right now, it's very hard, and no one's really resourced to do that work. So our long-term goal is we want to take, the prep program is essentially a shortened version of what we would do in the public workforce system. And what's shortening in it is not desire, it is limitations of being incarcerated. So if we get this larger funding, part of the effort there is to figure out, in partnership with the courts and the sheriff office, how we can better provide services pre-release, especially in those diversion models. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you.
So one of the big things that has really been a challenge, not only in Pac Mountain but in the state, is that when we do receive these formula funds related to WEOWA, we have kind of been in a cycle where we're doing the previous delivery model that the federal government endorsed, and that was WEYA. WEYA has a lot of the, had a lot, or has a lot of principles and concepts and service delivery approaches that we have in WEOWA now. But what WEOWA brings to it, one is the focus on opportunity. So we invest in a job seeker, help them navigate their barriers, and train and invest in them. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to land in, right? So that's where the O is, opportunity, that's where that comes from. But in previous models, this group of funding, adult, dislocated worker, and youth, we call it Title V, because that's the legislation that authorizes it, we have stood up case management services. And we go out and we identify participants, they come into WorkSource, we encounter them through programs like the Job Champion Network and Journey to Jobs. Those are the populations we're tasked with serving, those with the most barriers and the least advantage into finding good-paying jobs. That is a very expensive proposition. So right now, we're spending around 80% of the money we receive providing the staff and infrastructure to spend or invest 20% of the money that we receive into the outcomes of those participants. And so when you look at what we got last year, $500,000 went into investments. And investments are things like paid work experience, paying for training, providing support resources like supplementing transportation and housing, food security, childcare. All of those barriers that we know, if not addressed, impact the long-term success of that person to be able to retain their job. And retention is the number one measure for the federal government. It's not only do we get them into a high-wage, in-demand occupation, they stay in that job for at least a year, right?
You mentioned childcare. Could you expand on that just a little bit? Are we having any successes on childcare, because it's a big issue?
It absolutely is. And to be perfectly honest, the work that Thurston Strong did, the choice to invest in childcare did make the problem less significant in Thurston County, but it wasn't good to start with, right? It is absolutely a challenge to find and afford quality childcare, right? And now the pandemic, I think, changed people's perspectives about this. This is why you see people lagging still in the return to work, because the return to work after you offset the cost of transportation and childcare, it's not always the best financial decision for a family to make. So from the perspective of our ability to support those costs, absolutely, we have funding that we could use to supplement or even pay childcare costs until a family can afford to pay it, as long as they're enrolled in the program. But we don't have the resources, or we're not in a position to impact the offerings or availability of childcare. And that remains a really big problem.
So availability is one of the bigger issues you're facing.
It is. Affordability, certainly, yes. But availability is the first issue. Finding it is hard, and then when you do find it, it is extremely expensive. And it's pretty, it's second only to affordable housing.
Have you got anything in the works as far as recommending changes to county boards or state legislatures?
So Thurston Strong did some recommendations based on the findings that we had early on in the pandemic, and none of those were surprising. It really comes down mostly to regulation and the expenses related to regulation. So the big, the big pushback that we hear from folks is we need to deregulate it to some degree, but at the same time, they want it to be a safe industry. So, yeah, we really don't have solutions at this point, but we do have resources to fund it when it is a problem, as long as they can find the services. And we partner with several community-based organizations that do that kind of work, specialize in that, based on different populations. And that's how we, that's how we integrate into the system, is we find those partners, resource them if they need it, but they're better positioned to connect them to the actual services. So that is a really good example of the change that we're actually undertaking at the moment. So one of the tenants of WEOWA is that we raid and leverage funding and eliminate duplicative services. So all of the other, there's five titles in our five-county region. That translates to 22 funded partners or agencies delivering services related to the legislation that's the public workforce system. Essentially, that means there, each of these agencies are given money to provide support and administrative dollars to help people that they target to gain employment, right? So in the education system, that's the, what we call Title II. That's basic education services, so people who are basic, skilled, efficient, but want to get a degree or upskill, they would enroll into the Title II program. The college has the funding to do that and drive towards perhaps a two-year or even four-year degree. If you look at Morningside, here in Thurston County, they provide services, employment services, related to people who have physical ability challenges, right? So they're focused on doing that work, and they're in the best position to do that. The way this system is supposed to work is we're supposed to collaborate together and integrate our funding to drive outcomes for an individual. We have the funding really to be more on the awareness of what career occupations are out there and then connecting to employment. That's where our funding through 1B is focused. Barriers, education, all of those things, we have to push that out to other partners. So when we case manage, then push it to the college, they case manage them, in the same way that we're doing. They're resourced for the training, they come back to us, we're resourced for work experience, OJT's, apprenticeships, things like that. And we can, to some degree, pay for the training, that fast isn't enough. What we're ultimately doing is duplicating administrative costs related to accessing the funding through the legislation. So we have aggressively pursued in the past six months, reducing our administrative costs related to delivering those services around 1B. The first thing is we had two providers. We had one do an adult, dislocated worker, and one do a youth. So we consolidated the contract into one and eliminated about $250,000 in leadership, accounting services, fees like that. Our target was to reduce $400,000, because we thought our reduction for the year would be 600. Turned out to be $722,000. Pac Mountain's staff, our direct budget takes the hit as well. So one of the things that we looked at is that even when we reduced, our providers are saying we need more and more and more case managers to hit those enrollment targets. So we've moved to eliminate enrollment targets, and rather than case manage folks directly, we are connecting them with other providers in the WEOWA system that are already doing that work. We follow them with the funding. So instead of us having, you know, probably $2,500 in administrative costs related to case managing, and the college probably having more like $4,500, so, you know, six or $7,000 case manage, we're removing that cost and directly going to the college to say, we want to work with job seekers, helping them figure out, or students helping them figure out what career pathway they want to go into. And then once they're ready, once they have their skills, we will work on transitioning them into employment. And we will follow them through employment. We could pay for their training, we could give them support funding. And what that's effectively done is reduce or cut in half, nearly in half, the administrative costs on our funding. The other thing it does is it takes money to, or resources to these other programs to drive their outcomes. We all have the same outcomes in WEOWA. It's employment, retention, median wage, skill gain, which is like a grade change or a addition in OJT, and then credential attainment. So it could be an education or professional certification. Because we all have the same goals or same outcomes, when we invest in those programs and help them achieve their goals, we're also hitting our programmatic with the money, and we're not spending 80% of the funds to do that. We're going down to 45%. So that's a fairly significant change in how we use the money. It also now becomes something that we can quantify back to each community to see not only how much money we're moving into the community directly to provide those services, but we can look at it agency by agency, who in the community, what programs are benefiting from that. We also will report out the success from that perspective. The WDC or the workforce... The WDC or the Workforce Board has the responsibility to monitor, to observe those outcomes for all of the Title programs and make sure that we're achieving that so that we could continue to get the money from the federal government. So, this is a pretty big shift. It does mean that in our WorkSource centers in the five counties, and Tuckwater especially, we're reducing our size and reducing our footprint quite a bit. The reality is, is we have a two-story facility in Tuckwater. The second floor is empty, and we're only about two-thirds full on the first floor, partly because we don't have everyone returning to work. But the bigger driver is actually clients do not want to come to a government facility to receive services. They want to engage us in technology, be self-driven, but still have the same access to the resources to be successful on their journey. And we're finding that because they're already self-engaged with the Community College system or through DVR or DSHS, that by bringing the money to those agencies, we're more likely to find quality candidates to invest in and have better outcomes. So, that's a fairly big shift. It does mean, if you'll go page four, it does mean we're going from five-hundred-thousand dollars that we invested a small group of people to around, looks like closer to two million, but we feel confidence in one-point-five to one-point-seven million will go into the community to be invested through other programs providing services to drive our common outcomes.
Is there any indication that's going to change? Are they going to get back to the way it used to be?
What do you mean by "used to be"?
Well, "used to come in," getting away from it.
Oh, I see what you mean, yes. Honestly, no. The success that we have had during the pandemic especially is when we talk about the opportunity. So, in the last page here, we're going to talk about business services, but Thurston County Chamber oversees our business services for the region, and we have a close partnership with all the economic development corporations. So, we do a lot of engagement with employers to understand what their demand is and what skills they need to be successful in those careers. When we look, when we try to engage job seekers around the services we provide, there's little, very little interest. But when we put a job opportunity up there, we talk about the pay, the benefits, what the work environment's like, we get a lot of response. We get a lot of response from disengaged job seekers. Those that are sleeping in late because they're at their parents' house, they're mid-twenties, they have never gone to work. We get their attention. We get people who have been in an occupation that has no longer become successful for them, and they don't know what to do. They disengage. We're finding those folks. We're finding people fresh out of recovery, out of incarceration, because we're talking about the opportunity. But we're not getting them to come into WorkSource. We're coming to them. So, we go to them, we eligibleize them for the funding, and we enroll them into the training. So, the job opportunity is kind of the bait. And then, what we tell them is, "In order for you to get to these jobs, you need to go through this training, have these credentials. We'll help you with transportation, housing. We could navigate your therapy for addiction. We can make sure that you have what you need to meet your parole requirements. We have additional resources." And that's how we get them excited about the opportunity. The training programs really build habits. They train them in the environment that they will work in, and then, that's how we find success. But we're not seeing people, even unless they're required to come in through UI, which there is a percentage of people that are required to do that, but that requirement is one check-in. And they do that obligation to keep their unemployment, and then, they also continue to do their job search remote.
Do you have your own people then working from home a lot too?
We have a couple. We returned in June, fully returned in June. We've always had people who live in Tacoma or do work that is remote, like IT. Then, our staff has come back. Our partners that we contract with, they have returned, largely because we required them. In the state, agency staff has mostly come back. But I'd say forty to sixty percent are in the office on regular schedule like they typically would have been. But what isn't returning are job seekers. And it's fewer and fewer people are engaged in the system. And typically, as unemployment goes down, of course, we see less people. But part of the reason unemployment goes down is not because they found employment, it's because they've disengaged, right? So, being able to connect with those that have disengaged is really the more effective path.
You work in the state prison system as well?
We do not. Well, we do have a program with the youth facility in Green Hill, which is a state facility, but that is the only one.
But not our adult facilities here locally?
No, so it's kind, when you apply for reentry funding, it's typically an either-or. So, you either have to work with a county or city facility or a state facility. We have typically focused on county facilities because the nature of their tenure in the facility, their likelihood to return, their ability to be deferred versus incarcerated, those are all things that is really kind of our sweet spot to divert them to integration back into the community versus the facility. But yeah, with the youth facility, we do, we have long-term programming that we do there. It's really about getting them excited about opportunities when they exit. They're younger, so a lot of it's education-based, work experience-based. We're able to give them work experience in the facility. We would like to work with the state facilities, but there's so much opportunity with the county facilities right now. That's our focus. So, just a couple more points around the demand-driven side of our system. So, everything in the system starts with the opportunity. So, we regularly meet with our priority sectors. We have six here in our region. They do vary from county to county, so we do have nuances there. But we really, we work with the EDCs, we work with the chambers. We work as a system, because our economic development corporation partners in the region do that already. We operate from the perspective of labor sheds versus county and city borders when it comes to these sectors. We just reaffirmed, so we did the research again, spent around forty thousand dollars just to make sure that nothing really had changed significantly from the impact of the pandemic. The one thing that we did see is that construction, which can be very seasonal, can be up and down, is very solid. It is the top need in every community. And that's what most of our employer partners are saying is, "We're trying to expand a facility, there's no construction workers, right? We have these projects in our communities, we need..."
Are you working with the trades then?
We are, yeah, yeah. So, to date, we've trained around seventy-five people since this time last year. Our first cohort was at the Lacey Maker Center. That was a huge success. The, gosh, I think the city is funding a cohort model downtown through Mike Reed's team, using the chambers model. It's connected to the WorkSource system so that they could leverage support dollars for those participants. So, I pulled the cohort-together model last year with Megan Feas, the vice president of the Thurston County Chamber, as a model, a trial model. It was very hard to get it funded. It was only sixty-five thousand dollars, but we figured it out, and it was a huge, huge success. And we've done that now in Everett County in the region. We've done a couple in Thurston. We're getting it through the city's money. I think they're going to do five programs, five training sessions this program year. They're going to move away from construction because we have really been focused on construction. That model will continue under the distributed funding model, but instead of using third-party providers, we'll work directly with the Community College system for those training programs. So, you know, when we understand what our employers need, the first thing we have to do is figure out what the career pathways are to those in-demand, high-wage jobs. We work with our training partners, the Community College system, to make sure those are available. And then, as we enroll and invest in participants, they have to choose from this quite extensive list of occupations in these six sectors. If it is outside of the sector, there are few in-demand jobs in the region that are. We typically run them through the financial aid system of the Community College system. We could still provide the support resources for their long-term success, but we don't typically use our investment dollars on them because it doesn't really give us the same return otherwise. And then, when we enroll in participants, when they decide on a career pathway, and we get what we call an employment plan together, that builds the supply. So, the business services team is already speaking with the employer, so they build what are called job orders. So, everything originates to a job order. People who are being trained will have an interview at the end of the process. They'll have the opportunity for work experience, OJT, apprenticeship, all of this. And that comes from that cohort model that we really vetted through that first program at the Lacey Maker Center. So, that's really kind of the glue that holds us all together. Employee-driven, or I'm sorry, employer-driven, in-demand occupations. And now, we're investing in our partners to drive their outcomes, which should raise up the whole system's performance. So, questions? I know it was a lot of information.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards, we'll start with you, and then we'll get to Commissioner Minzer.
I'm still interested in that opioid epidemic, if you will. And are we getting any of the litigation settlement money?
Yeah, so, those are really two separate things. So, the way, I think most of you guys probably understand that the federal government will designate a community, a county, a city as opioid-impacted. It really all comes down to demographic information or data about the county, like, you know, overdose rates and things like that. So, once you achieve that status, probably not something that you're actively trying to achieve, but once that has been identified as an issue for an area, region, that then makes them eligible for these specialized dollars, right? So, the programming related to it or the expectations related to using the money in the opioid program are very, very open. The intention is to address the impacts of the epidemic, right? So, you don't have to have had an addiction to an opioid. It could be a family member, it could be, you know, a partner, it could be a coworker. We're able to access the funding in our region because we have that status. So, by simply being a resident in these five counties, you can access that funding. So, we don't have to draw a connection to the opioid epidemic for that individual, because it has a pervasive impact on our community.
And you staying in touch, like, with our coroner's office for those numbers and such?
So, all of that stuff is gathered for every community on an annual basis. So, when we do our applications, we just research. In some cases, it's the Census Bureau, whatever their source is for the data, we pull that data together to do the application. In this case, because it was a state application, the state did all of that work for us. What we provided is, if we had the resources in the community, how would we use it to impact family stability and getting people to be self-sufficient so that they don't fall into the cycle of addiction or what have you? Our model does particularly focus on people re-entering society based on a direct impact from the epidemic. And what we focused on is helping people understand how to navigate resources so that if they do have an economic condition or some personal life challenge, that they don't fall into an old habit, like using drugs to deal with the issue, right? So that they understand how to do it. We also train them as peer navigators. So, one of the success models that we see with reentry especially and also with drug addiction is, when you become a role model on how to get out of a situation where you're impacted by those two things, then you become, the ability to help other people do that is something that builds some confidence and can help them from either, you know, reoffending or falling back into a addictive cycle. So, that's the model we put forward. We use that as a way to identify and connect to providers of service. So, we're going out into the community and working with all of the agencies that support people impacted by the opioid epidemic. But then, the intention there is to use the other federal resources to drive their outcomes to employment. So, we navigate them to the system intentionally. We build some specific approaches to that work based on the fact that they're in that population. And essentially, because we have this broad definition of opioid-impacted, we take a large chunk of that money into our general pot of money. So, this one-point-five million right now, this program year is about three-hundred thousand. Of that comes directly from the six-hundred thousand dollars we have to use that money. Does that make sense?
Have all counties in the region reached that status of...
I believe so, yeah.
All of them?
Yeah, so, our particular focus is Gray's Harbor. It is demographically the most impacted and the community that we centered it from. But the work we're doing with the PREP program, the work that we'll do with the hub, some of the resources from opioid are supporting the work we do with the hub, and also Lewis County facilities are really where we focus connectivity to those populations for folks reentering. The bigger side is connecting to these, forming relationships with service providers in the community to really connect to those that are being served. So, again, that we can invest in the outcomes through those agencies.
How about fentanyl? Does it get tied in with opioid automatically? Or do they just don't look at it separately? What's the deal there? Because that causes more deaths.
Right. I'm not really sure how the counties achieve the designation, like, what are the drivers to that? But when you look at a treatment approach, it's certainly not just going to focus on opioid. It would look at all of those pieces. And I think one of the things to think about with the public workforce system is we're not on the emergency side of the situation. We're on the long-term care side of the situation, right? So, those immediate impacts of those situations, there are providers that really focus in and have those expertise. So, once they get to a particular point in their recovery or their treatment or whatever the situation is, that's where we come in to really ensure that long-term success. So, they don't get into the situations that lead to that. Most of those things can be connected back to occasion, right? Those are big, common denominators. So, once they get to a certain point, we can start addressing those items so that they're not the root cause of their connection back to a reoffending or addiction.
Can I ask about this distributed funding model? I'm having trouble understanding the next-to-last and second-to-last slides. Can you just explain to me like in a little bit? I know you did, but can you repeat what the tangible difference is in this distributed funding model versus the previous slide where you say current model is expensive and effective? That means, what's the meaning, ineffective?
No, it is effective, right? So, we...
Show me how that differs.
Yeah, okay, that's a very good point. So, the money that comes into the region is impacted on our previous success. So, we have very high employment targets and retention targets. And also, we have very high credential attainments and measurable skill gains, some of the highest in the states, because the program that we do really drove those outcomes, right? So, it has not been a big focus while we have lots of funding, right? So, this is one of the lowest points of funding that we've had through the formula funding, right? So, now, when you really start to dig in and look at where we're spending our dollars, we see that, yes, the program is being successful, but it's very expensive to sustain it, and it's increasingly harder to attract people to use the resources. So, it is affecting in terms of delivering the outcomes we're expected to get with the money. What it doesn't do is it does not, it is not accessible by other service delivery models in the OIA system. So, you've got the Community College over here dealing with people who are basic, skilled, deficient, which is a target population of the funding we oversee as well. But they don't have the investment resources. So, the retention pieces, the employment connection, those are what drive the long-term outcome. Regardless of like what your education or skill level is in a particular career pathway. If you can't connect to employers, if you can't get yourself to the job, if you don't have the, you know, the uniforms, you can't pay for credentialing, you're not going to be able to get those opportunities, right? So, that's where our money comes into play. And what we did is, we built a silo. We asked people to come to our silo, and the people coming to our silo are getting jobs, understanding those jobs, and they're becoming self-sufficient. But we're also only servicing people who are required to come in from UI or that come to the system organically. So, those tend to be higher-educated, wider populations in the community, those that are most likely to be successful anyway. And we're not connecting to these priority populations because we're not able to get them to come to the facility. They're at our partners. So, by taking this money out to those partners, we feel that we can get the same level of outcome. So, we could still be effective, but the demographics will naturally change, the skill and credential attainment will grow significantly, and that the programs that they're struggling to be successful, like the Community College completion rates, around forty percent for us, forty-two percent of the people completing are getting jobs. We think that we can really impact that and make it more like seventy-five percent complete the programs, and of those who complete, eighty-five percent get jobs and keep them for a year, right? So, we think we can bring the effectiveness of those investments to partners working on the community. to partners working on the communities and the people in the community that we should be connected to.
And CBO stands for what?
Community-based organizations.
Okay, so these are these partners you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So to give you some examples, the community colleges, Morningside, DSHS, DVR. Those are programs that are required partners in the WEOWA program because they get money from the federal government, from those three agencies to do that work. Then there are contracted partners that do things like Job Corps. Gosh, I shouldn't be on route at all these off. So there are about nine title partners, and then the balance that gets us to 22 are all community-based organizations. Some of them are philanthropic-oriented, right? So they get money from donors. Others get funding from like TST. They get grants from the state for mental health services. So they are typically some combination of donations and state allocated funding, better allocated money that they competitively go for.
22, that number comes from the number that you actually work with or...?
Yeah, so those are 22. So there are direct-funded programs through WEOWA, and then there are required partners. So those core partners like education, health and human services, those are required, and then we have, or sorry, those are core. And then we have additional required partners because they are connected to employment and federal money, right? So like HUD is an example. So when HUD dollars go into the community, if they're related to employment, they're a required partner in the system. So they pay in to support the work source system. They have funding to do stuff related to employment. And we also, that's our common bond. Is if you have any money to support employment, that ties us all together. And then we have the common outcomes related to that employment.
Thank you. My questions are, I have two. You mentioned in the beginning that you were planning to continue the DEI work that Cheryl Fambles had began. And I'm wondering how that's going to fit in the demand-driven portion that you're talking about and how you're going to intersect those two together?
So that's actually a really good question. And, you know, like a private sector employer, we're an employer, right? So we think about how diversity especially impacts our ability to do our work. And what part of the job we do with our business services investments is really help employers understand how to be competitive, how to frame an opportunity for a job seeker. And increasingly, employers are coming to us to ask us to assist them with diversifying their labor force, right? And we have some very easy practices to adopt. We, you know, PAC Mountain a few years ago went skill-driven. When we post a job, we don't say you have to have a college degree. We say, these are the skills you need, right? The way we communicate jobs out, the practices we do to connect with a more diverse workforce for ourselves and for the system is how we really drive that messaging related to demand. Most employers, that's a high priority for them, right? They want to diversify. They understand the values of doing that. So because we focus on a more diverse population than our demographics would suggest, county by county, the talent we're developing is naturally much more diverse than the candidate pool you would engage on indeed, right? So by doing that work, by understanding, you know, cultural sensitivity around connecting and engaging those populations, being thoughtful about our design models and how we do the work, all contributes to our ability to connect. And because people walking through the door are more reflective of the community demographics, it's been hard for us to connect. And we've struggled for the past few years, like, how do we take some administrative money and get out to the community? Well, the first thing that meant is we can't do as many direct services, right? Maybe we should put some administrative dollars in these partners so that they could do the work for us. Well, that's complicated and expensive in a different way. So that's really how we got to this notion that we need to, as an expert in engaging the workforce or the employers, get into the community, work with these program partners to understand how to develop talent that is already naturally more diverse and connect them to the opportunities. So it's embedded in really everything we do. And we do focus on people in poverty. It's been a long-term commitment of PAC Mountain's region and people reentering the workforce from incarceration. And again, because of the nature of the demographics in our community, that brings a natural diversity to the workforce.
Thank you. And my next question's in regards to, of course, we know that right now workers are in high demand, right? Employers are really hurting with that. And part of it has to do with our huge retiring workforce that's going out of the market, but also because the incoming market, you know, it's, they're going through issues with childcare as well as other issues. So telework is in huge demand. And some of these sectors that you're focused on, they don't necessarily telework. So what is the, you know, and most of, in county government especially, you know, we also struggle with teleworking in some aspects of what we do. So how is it that we're going to be able to attract those? And where are we going to go into the future with more demands for a teleworking environment?
So that is a very common question. Every panel I've been on, they ask that question. You know, this is one of those things where I trust my instincts. I think what, to some degree, this will normalize out, and employers will figure out how to take advantage of and be competitive with remote workers where they can. And increasingly, you know, you see big splashes, you know, like Tesla demanding everybody come back to work. We did it. We were worried. It was hard. It was difficult. We normalized after that. We actually just surveyed our staff, and the two-thirds of them liked working in person together and liked working directly engaged with their workers. But they also asked for more time at home, right? And when we dig into that, it's things like the cost of transportation, right? So what employers will naturally do is they'll start to figure out, they'll test things to see what works. But culture really plays a big key in that, right? You have to have an environment where people want to come work. And that can be very, very hard to achieve, a nice balance and be attracted that way. But you also have to speak to them when you're recruiting and you're doing outreach, like you need to, today, it's really fifth. You have to give a compelling reason for people to come in to work, right? And people still think that they can find remote work, right? So, and they can right now, right? But as that all starts to level out, what you'll see is people will start to adjust their expectations and say, can I work from home one day? Can I work from home two days, right? We have a 410 or 49 and 4 models. Our office is closed on Friday, but regardless of whether you're working on Friday or not, you get to work from home, right? So those are kind of things that we've done that have been really successful in building staff around. And those are the things that really impact that. And, you know, good benefits, good pay, all of those things. And being able to navigate that, those are the biggest drivers, I think, right now in being successful in recruiting, and more importantly, retaining the talent you do get.
How many FTEs do you guys have?
We have 17 now, 18, 18. We had 31 a year ago.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming by, giving us this informative presentation. It is 2:01 PM. We are adjourned. We will be popping in with another meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.